It's 5:30. We'll call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting. The scope of the meeting is limited to what's been issued in the public notice of the special meeting. We'll receive a presentation of the FY 2019 proposed operating budget and FY 2019 through FY 2024 capital improvement program. So at this time, do you want to give us some introductions and then we'll get started?
And I'll turn it over to Mike. Oh, it's on now. Thank you. I'd just like to thank the staff and all the department heads that put this budget together. I was gonna say a lot of blood, sweat and tears, but thankfully there was no blood. There's just sweat and tears and gnashing of teeth and so forth in getting this document together. As you know, there's always more needs than resources, so it's a difficult decision sometimes getting it down to where it's balanced budget and still meets the needs and the services we provide. So we look forward to going through it. We'll answer any questions you have. And I'll turn it over to Mike to get us rolling.
Well, maybe I've got a question first with kind of a recap of the total. Do you have a recap that you're gonna present, like what our total expenses are projected, revenue, what the property tax is gonna be?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's all gonna be in here.
That wasn't in our...
Yeah, it's not in there, but it will be in here.
Okay. So then can we have copies of these slides tomorrow?
Sure. Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yep, we'll get those to you, no problem whatsoever.
So what we're gonna look on the slides are different than what we got in the handout for right now?
Not completely. There's gonna be a little bit of additional information in there that's not contained in the documents that you got.
Okay.
There'll be some different things on the mill rate, the mill levy, the proposed taxes, a few other things there. We got some charts and some graphs in here to illustrate a few things for you. Can you hear me okay?
Not real good. Not real good. Here, I'll move this over here.
Larry, can you hear him okay?
Not real good.
All right, is that better? There we go.
Okay, so the purpose tonight is to bring us all together, to allow us to present the budget, what we've put together for you all for this year. I just wanna run through it with you all, answer any questions that you might have along the way. This is just an opportunity to introduce you to what we have. This isn't by any means a work session from the standpoint that we're gonna be burning down through this thing, other than just getting an understanding of what's in here. So as we go along, if you have any questions, just stop me and ask.
I think sometimes it's good to give us the overview. Let us digest it and then come back with questions later. It's with the two different sets of information, it'll be easier to tie it together after you kinda do a cursory presentation.
Absolutely.
I'd like also a quick review at some point of what steps you've been through to get to this point.
Oh, boy, we've been through a lot of steps to get to this point.
Briefly then.
We went through department by department and budget by budget. I think we have, I think from a revenue standpoint, I put the revenue together, and we have our general fund departments, which I think there's 13 of those. Then, of course, we have our three enterprise funds. We do those, build the revenue and then the expenditures around that. The department heads are highly involved with all their departments from an expenditure standpoint. They put their own CIP together, their capital request. That all filters back into me, I start pulling it all together. Then, of course, we have our other funds that are budgeted, that are not departmental, such as the bond and interest and specialty use sales tax, so on and so forth. And I think there's about 11 of those. So just going through those and pulling all the information together that we need to have, and it's a lengthy process. And we get back together and then we start going through it and we start making adjustments, making cuts, making sure we haven't missed something and that we have the information in here accurately to provide you all.
So I know the department heads have probably had wish lists, asked for things that have gotten cut.
Yes.
Are they accept, is this acceptable to our department heads as it's written now or have they seen this?
I didn't see them kicking and screaming about it.
So they have seen it?
Yes, they have seen it. So they were highly involved in this. This is not something I just put together.
Okay.
It's not something that Craig just put together.
Right.
They started it, we sat down, we visited with them on the front end, and then as we were going through and needing to make adjustments, we visited with them about those adjustments as well.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Just to get started, we'll flip over to the next slide, give you a little overview. So our assessed valuation went down again. This is the second year in a row that this went down. It went down six, nearly $670,000 or 1.37, almost 1.4% decrease. Of course, as we're putting this together and we're trying to understand what the mill levy can be and will be for 2019, we do have limits with the new tax lift that went into effect in 2018. The only increase that you can have outside of certain areas, and that's public safety and bond and interest fund, is you're limited to the five-year average of the CPI, which that number for 2019 is 1.4%. And as long as you're within that range, you don't have to have a special election. So that number came in, the most it can be is 2.652 million. The proposed mill levy for 2019 is gonna be 2.636, and that is a rate of 54.844. So that is a $36,000 increase over what we had in 18. But do keep in mind in 2017, we reduced the levy by $61,000. So it is still less than where we were at in 2017. Now, of course, our Blue Cross and Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Insurance for the city went up again. It was 15% last year and only 8.5% this year. Just to take a look at, on the next slide, just gives you kind of a comparison of how the rates were broke out and how they're allocated, both for 2019 and what was approved for 2018.
You just said that the insurance rates are going up, but it shows employee benefits taking a substantial drop.
That is the two different things. The employee benefits covers FICA, CAPERS, and unemployment insurance. Health insurance is still rolled up into the personnel of the departments.
Thank you.
Don't move it yet. Okay. Take your time.
This liability insurance number, is that a pretty firm number or is that a guess?
It is, well, we calculate that. We have some fund balance in there. We typically overstate that anyway when we do the budgets because we don't know exactly what personnel's gonna be in there.
Right.
You know, we assume that we're budgeting everything that is gonna be fully staffed. Of course, we know that we have turnover and transition in retirements throughout the course of the year. We have openings and backfills, so it's usually overstated a little bit.
So we're increasing our spending over 2018?
Well, you said spending. Are you talking about, are you talking about the mill levy? Or are you just talking about overall expenditures?
Overall expenditures from 2019 compared to 2018.
We'll get to that in a couple slides. It is going up.
Because the mill levy is kinda confusing if you look at mills when you've got a decreased property valuation to generate the same fund.
That's right.
The mill increases, but it generates the same revenue.
That's right. And in this situation, we do have a 1.4% increase in the levy year over year. So it went down $61,000, the levy did, 2017, or from 2017, but it's going up $36,000 this year. But yeah, you do have to compensate and adjust those mill rates around to offset the difference in the valuations to get back to the same dollars.
So it's deceiving at this point when we're looking at a mill increase to whether it actually increased taxes, because if your property dropped in value, you'll pay a higher mill levy to get the same tax generated.
That is 100% correct.
Yeah.
And we'll go through a little illustration on that as well. Okay?
Okay.
Everybody good here? Okay, ready for the next one? This will be what we put together for the budget publication. It has to be put in the paper, I believe, by the 3rd of August. So this is just a preliminary one that I've gotten put together there. Leonard, this does show you what the budget was for 2018 and where the budget is for 2019 for our budgeted funds. So there is about a million dollar increase there, but through the transfers, some of that stuff, anytime I'm transferring money in from one fund into another fund, it counts as an expenditure, but then we back that out. So when you really look at it, it's going up a couple hundred thousand dollars over last year.
Under the 2019 proposed budget, it says amount of 2018 tax to be levied. What are you comparing in that column? Or should that have been 2019 tax?
It should have been, it should have been 19.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
That's why I was trying to see if you were comparing back.
Nope, nope, nope. I need to change that. Good catch.
Okay.
No, it's just the way they set that up, because it says taxes levy, because this is being just proposed, no taxes have been levied. If you look up to the very right, you'll see the 2.635 million. That's what the total levy would be. That's what we're proposing. Where it's at? Okay.
Thank you. I can see it there, I can't see it there.
I understand. Some of these slides are, it's small, but I just have no choice in order to get the data in there. So we good here?
Yeah.
Les, you all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
He's writing fast.
All right. Well, I'm gonna get this for you, so you'll have it. So the next slide, it just shows the, taking a look at the valuation, where we're planning to be in 2019 and where we are at in 2018, the differences there. It shows what the maximum tax levy could be, and then what we're proposing, and also what was approved for 2018. Difference, the increase is 36.4,000. That's a 1.4 increase year over year. The next slide, you're kinda talking about the mill rate and what that does to your house valuation. So we looked at it two different ways here. We looked at it just comparing, you know, straight rate, no difference in valuation. If everything was equal from one year to the next, what does that change look like? We used a $100,000 home, but then we also, the average, about the average household value for independence is around $70,000, so we wanted to use that number as well. If there was no change in valuation on a $70,000 house, your increase for your taxes for 2019 would be $12.08. A $100,000 house would be $17.25. Now, as you go down to the second part of it, that is with the change and adjustment and the valuation, and how that should impact people's houses, just because we're seeing an overall change. We don't know which houses are gonna be impacted. Craig keeps telling me his keeps going up. But on a $100,000 house, an adjustment evaluation, we can assume that it would drop down to $98,000. Therefore, the increase would amount to $8.59. On a $70,000 home, I would, the valuation would decrease down to $69,000 or an overall increase in the levy for 2019 of $6.01.
So you've just taken that drop and averaged it out, basically? So this is...
It goes by the percentage decrease. Okay. All right. Moving on, we're gonna hit the revenues here real quick. This is the general fund revenue. The biggest change would be in the property tax, and that was in part as a result of the increase in the levy.
And spending.
And spending. And it'll be associated with it, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. We are holding sales tax level, not making any adjustments to that at all. We've been, we were close last year, we're kinda on target this year. I'm not seeing anything that would give me any indications that it would be prudent to increase that. I think I'd just be putting Foltz numbers in there. You know what? If we hit a big, great.
I'm not concerned about hitting a big.
Yeah. The revenue numbers are gonna be conservative.
I think Leonard's saying he's not considering that conservative. Is that right?
But just making sure that it's always better to project low sales tax revenue and be surprised than to not drop it enough with our trend bouncing around.
The trend's been pretty close to where we've been targeting. You know, we're a little bit over now, we're just slightly under last year. So we're close. I think that's a, that's a good solid number for us to work with.
Okay. The grants that you figure in for revenue, are those known grants or projected grants?
Those are... Let me find those. So those are known grants. So when we call that grant, what that, what those dollars right there actually represent is the county money that's given to the EMS department.
I was wondering how you could figure in a grant that you're gonna apply for and consider that revenue.
He's got a Magic One and a crystal ball up in his office, and I borrowed them one afternoon. Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Here's just a breakout of what that looks like. And of course, 56% of that's derived from taxes, combination of property taxes, the sales taxes, throw in the other taxes, which would be your franchise fees and whatnot, and you're at 69% of all your revenues derived off some sort of taxation or franchise fees. Next slide. This is just giving us a little highlights of some of the things that, as we've kind of already gotten into, we're holding the sales tax flat at 1.931 million. Now, keep in mind, as you look back at that sales tax, you'll say, but Mike, it says 2.4 million. That 1.9 is, it represents 1%. The specialty use sales tax has a quarter percent that comes back into the general fund. So that's how we get up to the 2.4 million. But on a 1% basis, that's, we're holding it steady there.
So where you've got property tax levy for 2019 projected up, but you're showing a decreased appraisal value, the projected up is because we're increasing the mill levy?
We're increasing the mill levy and just shifting those mills around, how they're And keep in mind, that does include the five mills for the capital reserve. So that's in there as well.
That sales tax at the top line for 2018 and projected for 2019, the 1.931 million, that is the, that's the special use section? Is that the educational?
So that would be the same for all three of them. All three of them would be 1931 each.
Okay.
Mercy Capital Reserve, 200,000 in 2019, what's that?
Well, and we're gonna get into that as we get into the general fund expenditures.
Okay.
And we'll talk about that some. Well, we got, Craig did provide you a copy of the capital improvement plan.
Right.
On this sheet right here, it takes everything for 2019 and anything that's, breaks it out by exactly where that funding source is coming from and what the request is for.
It's showing it as revenue. Is that from the 500,000 that Mercy gave us?
Yes.
That you're taking 200 out of it?
Yes.
Putting it in here?
Yep.
So it's money we've already received?
That's right.
Now you're planning to spend it?
Yep, and put it back in there. So it comes in as revenue and goes out as an expenditure. Any more questions, sir? All right, and this is just a breakdown by the revenue, by department, and this is not, administration obviously is the bulk of it, because that's where all of our taxes come in at. Fire EMS, that's primarily based on the grant, the grant money that comes in, as well as the ambulance, ambulance fees. Those are the two big ones there. Of course, we do have a little bit going up in Building D in 2019. Part of it's in, due, in 2018 is due to a transfer in, but we also have some additional revenue coming in from DCF now that they've moved into our offices.
The cemetery shows from 2018 to 2019 the same, but isn't the number, is that based upon revenue from funerals and selling of lots?
Lot sales, grave openings. Those are the two primary factors on that.
And are there, is there a constant number or is that dropping? Seems like the funeral homes have been...
It's actually been, it's been increasing. It was increasing, what we've seen year to date, 2018 over 2017. 2017 was a little bit down, but it's, it's pretty consistent in there.
Okay. I thought there was some talk at one, one meeting that the graves openings, we weren't having as many.
Actually, that's been the big thing this year.
That's not good.
This is where they wanna go on.
Okay.
Okay. Gary, you still studying?
Yeah. Talk to me about the fire EMS number.
Okay, that's primarily made up of the $183,000 that comes in from the county on the grant, their funding piece of it, and then also the ambulance service. That makes up 95% of that number.
Okay, so basically you're using the same number that we revised 2018?
Yes, yeah, because that, we have a rate increase that's going into effect on some of those. We're seeing a lot of transfer, we're seeing numbers spike up a little bit. So I've raised that number, but I didn't wanna get too carried away with pulling it any higher into the future.
Right. Okay. And Building D again?
Building D, there is a transfer that's going in there, which is what spiked it in 2018 on the revised piece of it.
Okay.
And then in addition to that, there's $38,000 annually right now that'll be coming in with DCF until they find a permanent home.
Right.
What was the spike on the increased revenue for 2018?
On the Building D?
Yeah.
That's a transfer in for the electrical, not the electrical, but the electrical expense to offset some of that.
So it wasn't direct increased revenue, supplemented from another source?
Yeah, it's transfer in.
From what account?
Memorial Hall Tax Credit.
So how much was that amount transferred then? Run that by again. The amount transferred from Memorial Hall Tax Credit?
It hasn't occurred yet, but it's 165,000.
Okay.
And that's realistically, that was, and you'll see as we get on into this a little bit later.
Well...
That was actually for 17, and then it did not get transferred in.
So the 138 in 2019?
Yes.
Covers the electric to be used, that you're not gonna have to revise that?
It doesn't cover all the electric, but it's helping offset the additional cost of where we were originally at, or where we originally thought it was gonna be at. And initially, I thought I could hold back on doing that, that's why I didn't do it in 17, because we were hoping that we'd do the upgrades, but that... And initially, I, I thought I could hold back on doing that. That's why I didn't do it in seventeen, because we were hoping that we'd do the upgrades, but that didn't happen. So we know that, that we're gonna still see higher costs as long as we, we continue to be in the building.
So is one hundred thirty-eight thousand, seven thirty-one a realistic number to cover all the electric for two thousand nineteen?
For the revenue, yeah. Because there, there's another transfer that goes with that too.
Okay.
That, that's.
Oh, the revenue.
Yeah, we're, we're on the revenue side of things.
Yeah.
So.
So the only thing that generated revenue on Building D was leased space and then you supplemented.
That is correct.
From another account.
That is correct.
So the one thirty-eight is based upon lease revenue?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. And then this is the expenditures and it's broken down by all of our different, um. Our, our four different categories. That's all inclusive of every department in the general fund. Biggest increase that you're seeing there, um, both in the revised and for twenty nineteen. Well, twenty nineteen is where the big jumps occurring and a lot of that has to do with the transfer, transferring your capital reserve money over to Fund Twelve. And that's two hundred and forty thousand dollars of that.
And what's Capital Fund Twelve?
That's Capital Reserve, the five mills.
The reserve.
Yeah.
Which, as you recall, last year, the five mills was two fifty, but with the decrease of the five mills is two forty, just slightly down.
Okay. And this just kind of gives you a little look of where we're spending the money. As you can see, personnel is a big piece of it. All right. Moving on, we'll break the expenditures down by department. And we'll go through quickly each one of these departments, one by one. There's a lot of them that there's really only minor changes to, uh, just inflationary things, if nothing else. Three biggest ones that are gonna be, uh, you're gonna see the increases in this police, fire EMS, and special improvements. And there again, the special improvements. If you'll note that two hundred and forty thousand dollars, that's the transfer of the special, special, or the capital reserve transfer.
What do you define special improvements as?
It, it's just a department where any, anytime I'm transferring money out of the general fund, it all goes through special improvements. There's, uh, I'd have to look exactly what all is in there, but there's, there's not very much in there. There's, the thing fireworks is in there, where we pay for the fireworks, which we're reimbursed for. Yes, one else in there.
Yeah, that's what I.
Uh, the airport transfer, twenty-five thousand dollars is in there.
Condemnations.
Condemnations, yeah. So typically, it, it runs in that ninety thousand dollar range.
It's just a hodgepodge of other funds that don't particularly belong to a.
Yes.
Specific category.
Yep.
So they're grouping them all in one.
Right. Where they, where they don't belong somewhere, we just kind of put it all in there.
The hundred thousand dollar increase in fire EMS.
And, and we'll go through that, Gary. Part of it's labor. And then, and then another part of it, about another eighty thousand dollars of it is increase in capital spending. Okay?
Okay.
And again, just to kind of give you a few, few things that we've seen here. We are seeing an increase in the health insurance. Overall, our expenses, we have pulled them down, uh, from a revision standpoint for twenty eighteen. Uh, from what we had originally approved. Twenty nineteen is, that's being proposed, is forecasted to be two, two hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars over the eighteen budget. But that also includes the two hundred and forty thousand dollar transfer to the capital reserve fund for twenty nineteen. Start off with administration here. Big thing that you're gonna see there on, if you look at the variances, it's gonna be in personnel primarily. Uh, for nineteen, that has to do with the treasurer position that was allocated to administration for last year. And then, and when you look at twenty eighteen budget versus twenty nineteen budget, you see a larger decline there. That's because we're moving the treasurer back down to the finance department. So those costs are gonna be associated in the finance department. And we've moved the building inspector back to the fire EMS department. So they'll be captured in that department.
So that's not a drop in city spending, it's just gonna show some.
No, it's a shuffling amongst departments. Okay. And municipal court, there's really very little change there. Okay. City hall, that's just, just ongoing maintenance and electricity for the building. That's the only thing that hits there.
Where are you putting the contract with trainer?
Trainer, that's going to come out of, uh, special use sales tax.
But it doesn't show as a city hall expense?
No, it, it's, it's not there. It, it'll show in, in Fund Seventeen.
Okay. So the nine thousand is basically.
Uh, seventy-five hundred's electric and then I have fifteen hundred dollars in there just for maintenance, someone breaks a window or something like that. Okay. General government. And you'll notice the personnel in general government, there is no personnel in general government to speak of. Um, no employees in there, but those are where the reimbursements, uh, from the, the enterprise comes, enterprise funds come in through. So there, there are a reimbursement back in there, so there are a negative expenditure.
So the, um, administrative salaries that comes out of Water Sewer is seven hundred eighty-one thousand?
No, not completely, because there are some, there, there are some expense, true expenses that are in there. But with what the, the water, wastewater, and then also sanitation, that's in there. And, and we'll get into what those, what those numbers.
You have those exact numbers.
Yeah, we have those exact numbers.
Okay.
And the, and the biggest difference that you're seeing on the capital outlay is we've taken all of our computer stuff that we're going to be replacing and put it all under general government. So it's located under one place instead of trying to run around, uh, eight different departments trying to track, track that down. Gary?
Good.
Louis?
I'm good.
Okay. And finance records. There again, the increase is primarily with health insurance merit increases and also putting the. Putting the treasurer back in the finance department. Okay? On the police. Big thing that's driving this is Jerry's had a lot of turnover. Not necessarily turnover, but he's had a difficult time getting people in there and filling all of his positions. And, uh, he, he's working very hard and he's getting close. So when we're looking at that twenty nineteen budget, we're assuming that every one of his positions is gonna be filled one hundred percent of the year. So that's why we're seeing the spike there.
How many positions is he down?
None.
Oh, none?
Well, he's got a couple backfills. I, I, I'd have to look up that information for you. And Jerry, if you're available. I know that he's got one open officer position, or he did as, as of last week.
We're full. Uh, we have one open dispatch position, but it's, uh, we've already got the person that's going through the process and I think we're about to make a selection on that. So within the next week, we should be back to full staff.
Over two thousand seventeen. To two thousand eighteen and then two thousand nineteen, there's a significant increase in personnel. But your number of officers didn't increase, did they?
No. We've, uh, we actually were five short for a lot of that timeframe and we battled back over time. We've slowly built up from twenty sixteen to net, to now.
But you had in the budget for a full department, didn't you, each year?
I would assume for planning purposes, yes. But that's, but the actuals.
So we're looking in twenty seventeen, uh, comparing twenty sixteen as actual, what was spent in personnel and twenty seventeen is actual spent in personnel. So it takes into account the vacant positions you had throughout the year.
Yep. I would expect so. And the other thing is to consider is that whenever you're down five, you're down twenty-five percent of your department.
Right.
That's gonna hammer you on other places.
Right.
It's just part of.
When you, when you look at the numbers, it doesn't show that. It just shows a big increase and it doesn't show that you had open positions. So that's what.
Oh, I see.
I wanted to clarify, you know, see if you just look at the numbers, it's, you know, you're increasing almost two hundred thousand in personnel. But your numbers, you're saying the positions are the same. But when you look at that being, it's what's spent and those were, open positions weren't paid. That explains. Well, we're looking at a budgeted number.
Yes, sure.
For all positions full, not reality of open positions not being paid.
Correct.
Okay.
Then we have to make some assumptions as we go along, because that includes healthcare as well. So, you know, if he's got four open positions, I don't know how many of them are gonna take advantage of the healthcare. So, you know, I have to build some numbers in for that. And so that, that can be a little low, it can be a little high. It tends to be a little on the high side.
Yeah. Because even looking at two thousand eighteen now, we're looking at a number that's based upon full positions.
Yes. And he was short coming into the year as well. He was short several officers coming into the year as well, so.
You've had. A lot of struggle finding qualified.
Yes.
Candidates.
Our turnover's, uh, gotten much better.
Yeah.
Uh, but the issue now is, you know, we've addressed that issue. Now we're. You know, how do you recruit? So we're, we're fighting the same battle at Coffeyville and, and, uh, eight thousand other law enforcement agencies across the country are battling.
If you could take the target off your back, that might help.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Louis, you good there?
Yep.
Okay. Gary? Hey, I'm not talking to you on the phone this year. All right. Animal control is next. And again, there's just minor increases in, in the personnel salary. Emergency preparedness. There's really very little end that goes into this one. Uh, we did replace one siren. Um, it actually got replaced in seventeen, but didn't get built until eighteen. So we use that money. It's, so it's already done. David and Sean have come across some, some good used ones. So we think that we can fit everything in there and that's why we don't have a new siren proposed for twenty nineteen. Okay. Fire EMS. It's the big thing on, on his capital that's going up. He, he's buying a new truck. Sean, you might step up here and help me out here on this a little bit.
How, how old's that truck you're driving now?
Ninety-three.
Ninety? No. You're, you're.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, two thousand eight, is that right? My, my pickup.
Yes.
Okay.
So anyway, it includes a replacement for that as well as an SCBA fill station that, that he's needing to get, uh.
No, it's a two thousand four.
Two thousand four. Uh, I mean, it's, it's time. He's, he's had some issues with it. Trying to think, Sean, what's your other?
Fill station is also two thousand and four, so it's time to get a new one. And what that is, is that's what we use to refill our air bottles, uh, that we use to breathe, you know, at structure fires.
And then also, that also includes twenty thousand dollars. We're gonna be applying for a grant for a, a pumper truck. So that, that would be our matching piece of a four hundred thousand dollar pumper truck if we're able to get that. So. That was the, the big pieces there, of course. Uh, he's had some turnover as well. We're assuming everything's going to get, uh. Kind of stabilized up there and looking at that budgeted number in personnel also is considering that twenty nineteen, he'll be fully staffed all year long. Would like to note that, and as you can see probably down at the highlights below. We're putting in a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for lease purchase of a new truck. Now, if it ends up being used and however we manage that, we'll do it, but that's. and however we manage that, we'll do it. But that's the place holder I'm using for 2019. And Craig and I discussed, and we can talk about this for a minute, we'd be paying for that out of the capital reserve fund.
That's back in the capital improvement section also, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay. Probably talk about it there.
Yep. Next one's the engineering. That one doesn't change much year to year.
The personnel, is that a contract with Mike Conway?
No, the 20,000 is contractual. That's, that's Mike Conway. He typically doesn't use all of it. But Kelly's got a few projects and some things going on out at the airport right now. We feel like he's going to use it in them some a little bit. What's up there in the personnel is, has been, or some are interns that we've, we've had that's working up there in the engineering GIs piece of it.
Okay.
Streets of traffic. No huge changes there. The biggest, the biggest thing that you're going to see there in 2019, capital jumped up a little bit and that's $50,000 for new tractor and bush hog. Then there's another $10,000 in there for a storm drain improvement over on Myrtle Street. Myrtle or Maple? Myrtle. And also the street projects, we have 175,000 program, both for 2018 and 2019 out of economic development. And then we, we were looking to do an additional 75,000 in 2019 out of the capital reserve fund.
And where do you have those? Are they in the contractual?
No, they're, they're not in that. So the 175,000 will show up in Fund Six. The capital reserve fund is an unbudgeted fund, so you're not going to see it there. But basically in between using $75,000 to do some street improvements out of that fund, plus the $125,000 for the ladder truck or whatever that would turn out to be, it would be paid out of Fund Twelve.
So the 50,000 for the bush hog is here in capital outlay?
Yes.
And the other two are shown elsewhere?
Yes. But they're all capital and they're all shown in the capital plan. So they're all together in the capital.
So the storm water improvement is in street traffic?
Yes.
General maintenance on storm drains at the inlets collapsed. Where's that shown? In here also?
Yeah, it's, I'd have to look and it's in there. There's a, there's a dollar amount in there.
I guess that's the part that's kind of confusing when you look at, at the numbers here and then as a department, what do they represent and where do they?
So it-
They indicate what's being done. I guess you need to tie through-
It's up in commodities. And then, then we have some contract labor that's also built in up there as well. That's under the contractual.
The contractual, are you, are saying that's actual construction work too, or is that engineering consulting or what is?
It can be a little bit of everything. Apparently, these are the standard four areas throughout Kansas that you use these four categories. And it's just kind of how they got set up. Some of the things I think ought to be in one and are actually in the other and-
I just wonder, you know, wondered if the 303,000 is engineering fees we're going to pay for streets?
No, that, that also, that $303,000 that you're seeing right there also includes all your street lighting. I combined those two funds because it has its own separate, separate department. And so I pulled that in there. So, so 175,000 of that is street lighting.
Okay. Yeah, the, the names don't mean anything without a description.
Yeah, I know.
And the numbers going through because contractual can be pretty broad.
It is.
Broad term, yeah. I think $303,000 worth of engineering for $60,000 worth of work.
No, actually, actually, most of that engineering, most of that engineering either gets put into a project.
Yeah.
Or it's paid out of the general government, which we already went through.
Okay.
Okay. All right, parks. Most of her capital outlay in the parks department for 2019 is coming out of the special use sales tax.
So really, most of this is just a summary where if we need questions, we'll get those back later in the-
Yes.
Capital improvement.
Yeah.
Because the terms are meaningless of actually what's being proposed in that department.
Yeah, I mean, just look in there. Craig's got, got it laid out real well. So you can look at that and see that. I don't have any, I don't have any slides going over the capital improvement program just because we have the dollar amounts already included in, in here in the budget. So, but yeah, refer back to those documents. Also, keep in mind, we have broke out, starting in 2018 when we revised, or 2017 when we revised the 2017 budget, we broke out park and zoo. So now zoo has their own budget, but we have not pulled all the personnel over into the zoo yet. So all of the park and zoo personnel is being captured in parks right now.
Oh, okay.
I had intended when we started 2018 to have it moved over, but we were doing an upgrade on execu time and they advised me, do not move that over until 2019.
Okay.
Questions there?
No.
Okay, off to the zoo we go.
Okay.
Okay. Cemetery's next and there's not much there either. The only thing in his capital is just 72-inch mower. Okay, questions?
And a jackhammer and a compressor.
Nope, not this year.
Okay.
We moved it out to 2020.
We've been asking, we've been asking for that for-
A long time.
Yeah.
But it's still working. We're just thinking it's going to give out sometime. But we can always borrow water if we need it. It's not every grave that they have to use before. So we could here just a bunch of these ties.
Well, if you can borrow, then we don't need it.
That's, that's kind of how we ended up there.
Yeah. Yeah. Borrow's good.
It's not convenient, but you know, if we have to have a grave done and they need it, they can cause a little issue.
Yeah.
That's something that we can work around.
Yeah. And then if you break it, they have to fix it.
Sweet.
Okay.
Okay. Memorial Hall. And there are some improvements that we do have laid out for the memorial hall and the capital, but you'll see that in the special use sales tax. Big thing we wanted to make sure that we did is we, we got a little extra money in here for some maintenance things. We were, we were, we were running pretty tight on that. We were running, encountering things in 2017 and already in 2018, things need to be fixed and we just didn't have enough money allocated for it. So I think some experience there on that. After going through that, we decided we need to bolster those numbers up a little bit.
Good. Okay.
Okay, and here's Building D.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's, that's where the electric expense exists. We anticipate that coming down a little bit, just from the simple fact that they have this, the mergers going, well, no imaging, number one, and then they have a merger going through. So we're supposed to see a little minor decrease in the rates with Westar. Plus, in addition to that, we've done the gas thing. So we feel pretty good about those numbers right there. But again, we've also been seeing some repairs up there that were unexpected. Had a chiller go down and then also there's a-
They're expected, they're just untimely.
Yeah, right. Yeah, you know it's going to break.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, and next one is your special improvements. Have you looked at the capital outlay section below in the comments there? That tells you what's in that? $330,000. All right, now we're off to the enterprise fund. And first up is the airport. Showing revenue going up slightly. Number one, part of that's going to do with the fact that we got the Jet A fuel self-serve thing going on out there. So we anticipate seeing additional traffic off of that. And then as well, price has been spiking up also.
Does the income from the rental agricultural land go into the airport fund?
Yes, it does. Yep. And we're, we're really expecting to see a big bump right there.
Yeah.
A little bit of it in 2018, a big piece of it in 2019. We'll see a full year of it in 2019. I believe for 2019, I think, I think I got programmed in there $66,000 just on the land rental piece of it. Commodities were, that's where our fuels, our fuel purchases are at. And I went ahead and pulled those numbers up a little bit. I felt like the margins, when I looked at that, were a little too high for where, where we usually set them at to be competitive. Because when you're up in the air and you can fly an extra five minutes and get to Coffeyville, Parsons, or wherever, if they're 10 cents cheaper, you might just do that. So we want, we want to make sure we're competitive. So we've, what had been planned previously was too high of a margin. We could lose customers doing that.
Okay.
Okay? And that just kind of goes, just tells you a little bit about the same thing we just talked about. Okay. We'll move on to water wastewater. I'll let you look at that, then we can kind of talk through that.
Quite a jump in revenues.
Yeah.
Somebody raised rates or something.
Somebody did raise the rates, so.
Turkeys.
So of course, those rates went into effect January 1. So we'll have a full year of those in 2018. 2019, sewer goes up 3%, the water goes up 6.5%. But at the same time, our number of customers has dropped since we did the water study. We're seeing that lower number of customers. So I have, I've pulled those numbers down actually from where we, we actually did the projections in the water study.
What's included in capital outlay for next year?
Man, he's, he's got all kinds of stuff. We'll get, I'll, I'll show you real quick on that. Big piece of that is, he's got a half million dollars in, putting in, starting the electric water meters. We're going to spread that out, or at least our intentions right now are spreading that out over the course of four years. It's about a $2 million project to do it. All, all these meters are going to have to be replaced in the very near future anyway. So this is a good time. But we didn't feel like we could absorb the whole $2 million all at once, plus having to hire contractors to do it when we can do it in-house. So we figured we'd phase that in. Make it more manageable, allow us build up some cash, get into some other infrastructure needs that we have. We also have $200,000 figured in on the KDHE loans, both on the wat, water plant upgrade and then the, the other sewer project, as well as the existing 220-some thousand dollars we pay in our, on our existing loan that we have right now. So when you add those things up right there, that, that's a pretty big numbers there. He's also got, what is that? Channel monster?
Yeah, 500.
And he's got a half a million dollars in there to, to replace the channel monster. If you want to know what a channel monster is, you're going to have to talk to Terry.
That $500,000 that you're proposing here, is that also, what is that actually going to cover? The actual software and the purchase of the actual meters?
Yes. But that'll get us started. So, you know, you're, you're going to have to have a program to get started.
Right.
And then we're just going to, we're going to buy as many meters as we can within that 500,000, get that area done. Next year, we'll come in, do it again. But we already have the software at that point in time. So we'll have the programming to take care of that. But that'll be taken care of in the first year. But I, Terry, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think it's relatively minimal when you look at the whole scope of the project.
Why don't we go through that when we get to the capital improvements? On your contractual, here, you mentioned earlier that when I asked about the administrative salaries?
Yes, the reimbursements, the transfers.
Is that in the contractual?
No, it's in personnel. No, it's in personnel.
It's in the two million?
Yeah.
How much is that amount coming out, do you know?
For 2019, it's seven oh three. 2018, six seventy. And we'll, we'll kinda run over those numbers and give you a little glimpse on, on how we arrived at those.
Got any questions here, or we'll go on?
Okay. So I'll just hit a few highlights here. Of course, the fund operated posit, in a positive cash balance in seventeen. And we've got that projected to do the same. Pretty nice cash, ending cash balances, positive cash balances in 2018 and 2019. Of course, sewer rates and water rates went up January 2018. And then there will, in January 2019, there will be some minor increases again. 2018, there is a five hundred thousand dollar capital reserve. So it's money that we're allocating that's gonna help us step in, build up those cash balances to be able to, to go ahead and do some of these projects. And here, this just gives you a little glimpse of what those water transfers have looked like since 1998. From a percentage span, percentage standpoint of total revenue. In between ten and fifteen percent is, is kinda your, your base target rate on those reimbursements.
It's always interesting when you consider a percentage to compensate a real expense.
Well, and because it's, it's.
You know, it's.
Part of it's really hard to calculate as well.
That's like basin construction of a house on square foot cost. It just has no basis, it depends on a lot of factors.
Sure.
Questions on this slide? Okay?
Okay. Get into sanitation. Again, he's not planned on the revenue side. He's, it's, he has, there's an increase of five percent 2018, that also went into effect in January. There is no proposed increase in, in 2019. The increase you are seeing there is, hopefully we pick up a few more customers along the way.
Looks like a big jump in personnel costs.
Big jump in personnel costs, yes, so. They're also going to be doing a reimbursement piece of it as well. Because that's part of the same thing that the, the water and wastewater fund has done. So there's a hundred thousand dollar reimbursement, administrative reimbursement back to the general fund.
And that's under personnel?
Any questions? Okay.
All right, the biggest thing, here, I'll show you real quick. Biggest thing, you do see the, the capital outlay outside of the, the personnel increase there. Capital outlay is jumped up a little bit and. Here's kinda why, we've got a new sanitation truck, police purchase payments, forty thousand dollars. Plus two balers for his recycling program and then also a new forklift. That's not all the capital, but that's the biggest pieces of it. Close you good? Okay, these next funds, we'll probably go through these pretty quickly. These are just our other funds, the budgeted funds. This is the fund that we pay MAC and, and the Chamber out of.
We pay the Chamber?
Yeah, two thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
And MAC is twenty-five, the balance twenty-five.
Yeah.
And Main Street?
Maybe, maybe it's Main Street, maybe it is Main Street, let me look here.
Before we supported Main Street, and didn't they do a presentation on?
It might have been Main Street.
And the museum.
And there's somewhere in here. Could, yeah, I think they are. Uh, this is twenty-five hundred on the Chamber of Commerce and twenty-five on the MAC. I think the other ones are funded through General Government and the General Fund.
I think you just said twenty-five hundred for both those.
No, twenty-five thousand on MAC and twenty-five hundred on the Chamber.
And what's the twenty-five hundred, just out of curiosity, for the Chamber, what is that?
I, I'd have to look into you and tell you on that.
Just a general gift?
I, I don't know if it's a gift or if it's just part of, you know, anybody that joins the Chamber and is part of the Chamber, you get fees and dues that are associated with it, it could just be that.
Yeah, Main, Main Street's in General Government, twenty thousand, that's in General Government.
And the museum?
Museum is there also, seventeen thousand.
And the band.
Municipal band, AWOL. Legal publications.
Okay, here's our economic development piece of things. Let you take a peek at that, and then I kinda got it broken down on the next page for you, what you'll be seeing in eighteen and nineteen.
The revenue is from the franchise tax?
Franchise fees, yes.
And the capital outlay in expenses, does that show, what we pay to Cessna?
Yes.
Also? And that's your other projects, or is that just Cessna?
Yep, here, I'll just switch pages, you can see.
Oh, great.
It breaks it all down for you. So if it's just got a twenty eighteen behind it, it's just singular to that year. If it doesn't have a year behind it, it's for both years.
For Standard Motor, aren't we?
As an inducement that's been sitting out there, they haven't, I, I'm just allocating it, it's never, it's never actually occurred.
I thought we did some, uh, switch with Water Service, or do, or they build at rate?
Yeah, no, they're, they, yeah, they're billed for that. And then they, they pay a fire protection fee as well.
Right. Okay.
Terry, that help you? You good?
Yeah.
Good. All right, educational sales tax, it's real simple. It's, it's their one percent sales tax, I pay the bonds and I give them the rest of the money.
Okay.
Okay. Special use sales tax. And I'll, I'll kick it over to the next page and I'll kinda, it, it's not everything inclusive, but it, it kinda gives you the bigger piece of where some, where that money's going. And the City Hall project is in these dollars here.
The general fund transfers, that's out of the bond and interest quarter cent too?
That facility, no, so that, that's not inclusive of that. But that's, that's a transfer that was scheduled for 2017 and also did not get done to reimburse the general fund for all the improvements that we did at Building D when we moved in there.
Oh, okay. So Building D improvements were the two twenty-five? Okay.
Okay. And now employee benefits fund. Basically, again, this covers capers, FICA, unemployment. And then there's a employee kinda benefit thing that we use to, to pay for things for the employees. Such as Christmas partying.
Questions?
We did pull the, the mill rate down on this one, because I think I overshot on it a little bit. And we, we had a pretty good cash balance in there, so I pulled it back down and we're, we're using some cash balances go around.
Okay.
Okay. Library fund, there it is, comes in, goes out. And that includes twenty-five thousand dollars that we give them annually.
So the twenty-five thousand there is not listed separate, it just goes as a tax and the?
Yeah, it, it's got a separate line item in our general ledger, but.
Okay. And the sixty thousand is included in there too?
No, sixty thousand is not in here, it's.
It's not in there?
No, it's in a, it's in the quality of life fund.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, questions on this one? Special Parks Recreation, this is, revenues all derived from our liquor tax. It's split in thirds, third of it goes to the general fund, third goes to Special Parks, and the other one goes to Special Alcohol Program Fund. And the numbers, the numbers have been higher in eighteen so far. And, and their projections that I got from the county were, were higher for nineteen as well.
Okay.
And then the Special Alcohol Fund. That thirty thousand dollars just for County. Now, we've built up some cash balance in that fund, uh, because it has went up. And I know that there's been some other entities that have approached us about getting that. But at the time, back in the day, we were, we were either getting around thirty thousand dollars or a little bit less. So sometimes we were already dipping into cash or having to supplement that. Uh, I don't know, that's why we've kinda limited it to Four County, because they're our primary service agents in Independence. But I think with where we're at now, it gives, gives you all some flexibility that if another entity comes in with a, that fits a, that fits a program requirements. It gives you guys some options that, that you could look at providing them some funding.
Okay.
Okay. Liability insurance fund. Yeah.
Okay.
That's pretty standard, not much I can do about that.
No.
And the Memorial Hall tax credits, this is where the, the transfers are coming out of, that we previously discussed. Part of it going into Building D, the other part of it going into, I think it was General Government's where I got that, those transfers going in. One of them was supposed to occur in twenty, twenty seventeen. And there again, I, I held off on doing that because I was, I was hoping we'd get the electrical upgrades done there at Building D that would start pulling those costs down, but.
Okay.
And, and this is the one that, that we gave you the correction on. Okay. Quality of Life. Seventy-five thousand dollars, that includes sixty thousand dollars for the library and fifteen thousand dollars for the pool.
So the revenue, the revenue is coming from?
That's just appropriated fund balance.
Put it in.
I mean, there's cash balance in there, but we're just showing it, using it up.
Okay.
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 And now on to bond and interest. And again, that comes straight off the debt schedule. There was, if you'll notice there in the budget for 2018, uh, the sheet that I had, uh, last year that I was working with. last year that I was working with showed that the 2010 was completely paid off with the 2016 refunding on the education sales tax. It was not, so that's why you see the revised spike up there a little bit. Because I had to go back into account for that, that additional amount. But that additional amount, the, the final payment on it was, occurred in twenty, occurs in 2018.
Okay.
Okay. And this just kinda breaks out exactly how, how everything's being paid for in that. We have a, a half million dollar cash balance sitting in that. That's why I pulled the mill rate off of this particular fund for the year. Uh, there's very little being supported with these payments by, by the ad valorem taxes. It's all coming in from other sources. So we're just gonna pay the, uh, principal and interest portion of the ad valorem with just fund balance.
Okay.
Okay, good. That gets us to questions.
We'll, we'll go with the capital here.
Yeah.
That's one of the questions.
Can we stand up and stretch for a minute?
I think we'll take, uh, oh, make a motion, we, uh, recess for five minutes.
That's great with me.
We'll be back to session at seven oh seven.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. The meeting's back in session. I was looking for the timer. Okay.
All right. Wanna go through this one?
Yeah.
Now this isn't, this is just 2019.
Right.
This is where our big focus is.
Right.
Uh, for right now, I think. Uh, and just so you can kinda see what this is, y'all have copies of it. I have it up on the big board and on your TV screen right there, so, uh... Peruse is your pleasure on that. Peruse.
It's pretty straightforward if you haven't figured it out, just list of all the projects and then the funding source to the right.
Yeah. I see we've got the fifty thousand back in for the audio upgrades. You know, when you're mentioning, we've got maintenance items, I'm thinking, do we need fifty thousand in audio equipment now if we're looking at some unexpected maintenance? What were the security upgrades?
Can I, before you go to the security, before you go to security, could I just make a comment about why we brought it back?
Yeah.
Impartial, because one, uh, I, I think you look in, in the community strategic plan, one of the prime directors was talking about trust in government, openness in government, and this is what gets to that as we talked about last time. Now, right, we'll, we have maintenance issues, but we felt again, to try to meet that goal of that directive, which, you know, the plan hasn't come out yet, but, but it, we know it's in there, so we feel we'd, one, bring it back one more time, uh, see if we can justify it. It's, it's coming out of special use sales tax funds to do that, so, but that's, that's one of the primary reasons, again, to, to get that openness. It'd be live streaming and, and from the previous proposal, we could certainly, uh, reduce that down. I mean, we had, we, I mean, last year you call it was like sixty thousand.
Right.
And we've got it down to fifty thousand, but we could work on it and maybe get a little lower. That's why we're doing it, or bringing it back.
Take it back up down here now. Have one more. Take it down to ninety-five. There you go. Got it.
On, uh, the riverside pool upgrades, the fifteen thousand, is that the, uh, maintenance that you talked about, the wall and the pool liner?
Yeah, some of that. We're not sure how much that wa, that wall for the wall separation is going to be. We're looking, maybe doing it two different ways, um, to reduce cost, but they submitted a list to us, um, back and they wanted, of course, the money now, but, uh, but they listed things like finishing up the walls of chlorine rooms, talking about that. They need to repaint the laser river and the lap pool for about five thousand. Staircases to both slides, about five thousand. Picnic tables, they want about four more, twelve fifty apiece. They had quite a list here, that added up to more than fifteen thousand, but that's all we thought we could, we could work down that list of fifteen thousand. The top one is that ceiling off the rooms and, uh, and we might have, I think we found a less expensive way than we initially thought for that. But that's the parks, correct? I mean...
Well, on the, on the pool, it, it's not a money-making endeavor.
That's for sure.
And, uh, you know, I think our agreement now is with City Rec that they'll lose ten thousand dollars and then we'll cover the rest, but do we have a, I, I guess there's no line item that addresses the future maintenance or, or that expense, because the pool is kinda one of those things that it's, uh, an asset to the community. I guess it was even funded through what we called quality of life, so it's one of the items that is where we give back to the community and, um, to look at, at being able to handle the maintenance in the future. And just like you're showing the list there, is more than what, uh, is wanting to be spent this year, but when do we get an active plan started to handle the long-term maintenance on, uh, on the, on the pool? Start putting back a little each year? You know, is that something that shows up in our capital budget or do you...
It, it does not right now, and that, we're just getting ready, we're just starting this process with Brent and he came in, what, two months ago Craig, and, and we kinda started outlining some of this and talking to him about the operations, talking to him about the maintenance, talking to him about the capital upgrades and start putting some things together so we have a better idea, so we can plan. Because quality of life's gonna run out of money and when that does, we're gonna have to find another, another source in which to fund it. Of course, we could use special use sales tax. The alternative would be it, it's gonna come out of the general fund.
Yeah, special use sales tax is gonna run out too though.
It...
And the pool's not, you know, it's, it's kinda like our traveling in a car, you start looking for the gas station before you're out of gas and...
That's right.
And we need to do that in, in those two items, just like you mentioned with the chiller.
Yeah.
At building D, it's untimely because it's destined to happen and the same with the, the pools and as we, you know, we, we're fortunate that the rec commission is willing to work with us on staffing because it is a city's pool. And, uh...
Yeah, they're charged, as you know, with running it. We have an agreement with them and one thing we need to clear up in that agreement, because it does say in there that the rec committee is responsible for maintenance. That's all said. So, all right, defined maintenance, is that just, you know, routine maintenance? Does that mean if...
Right.
If a pump goes out, that's maintenance?
Yeah.
You know, or what? We, we wanna kinda define that further.
Yeah. That's kinda what we talked with the library too.
Right.
Defining those.
Well, I can tell you Terry and his staff have been very helpful with the pool, Brent going in there fixing some of their pumps and, and a variety of different things, so that's minimizing the cost that, that we're seeing and he's seeing, so...
And, and what we're starting to see is, well, they're relying too much on Terry's staff for maintenance. Anytime there's a, a broken, you know, sink, oh, it's call Terry, you know, and that's not the way it should be. They have a maintenance person on staff that services the, the recreation, so, but we've gotta iron some of those details out and the biggest thing is we didn't want them just showing up saying, here, you know, thirty thousand dollars now before the pool opens. And that's the, that was their expectation, where we had programmed for it.
Right.
We wanna get on that same cycle. They want, we want them on our cycle ahead of time.
Yeah, so how's that gonna be handled? In capital improvements with line items for those, or is it gonna become a separate funded item?
We had worked through all those details, but it would be, it would probably be a separate, you know, account for recreation, uh, for major things again. Again, we don't wanna become their maintenance, their routine maintenance person, you know, unless, I won't say that.
Yeah, well, that's a, a problem that...
Better not say that.
The city owns the facilities, so it's not City Rec's pool. It's, it's a city's pool and really need to iron out that line where maintenance that's under their purview and what's, comes back to the owner.
Directly, directly, that's part of the problem is when you have an owner and, and not another entity running it versus the owner.
I don't think we want the headache of staffing and... That's one of the things.
Staffing lifeguards is not easy.
No. Are, are we looking at the seventy thousand for police car? Is that two this year or one year?
Come on down.
Last year we projected forty thousand for this year for a police car and it's the thirty thousand. I didn't know if you're looking at a special vehicle or we're looking at two.
Now, we have a six-year replacement plan, actually.
Fab.
So we're looking to purchase a patrol SUV next year as well as a detective's vehicle. And that detective's vehicle will not be a police vehicle. It'll be a stock vehicle of some sort. And then when we do that, we'll pull one patrol car out of patrol, uh, and assign that to our school resource officer and then we'll pull his car out of the fleet and get rid of it. So next year we should be getting rid of three vehicles.
Uh, last year we had projected just forty-one thousand for this year. So...
What we, what we did was we sat down in April, we had a big meeting, uh, with our, we had the leadership and our fleet maintenance officer and we had a, and we all came to an agreement on what we thought we needed to do with the fleet with the six-year outlook. What we've done up until this, 2019 is basically what we've always done, is one car this year, two car next year. But that plan, uh, for one, we have an animal control vehicle that probably shouldn't be an animal control vehicle in my opinion. We need to have a purpose-built vehicle for that, uh, not a small truck with a box in the back of it. And then we looked around at the condition of the detectives' vehicles and the condition of, you know, rebuilt patrol cars and that kinda thing that shouldn't be in the fleet. And when we start looking at, we start projecting mileage and we start projecting maintenance costs out and, uh, we made a six-year plan to start pulling vehicles, getting rid of them when they start costing us money or when we project it, they'll probably start costing us money. And so now we have a six-year comprehensive plan that of course will have to be revisited every year like any long-term plan. It, it will not be the same, I'm sure, but it, it should be fairly similar as time passes. Uh, but, you know, you start having a problem vehicle or something, you gotta make some adjustments, but that, that is the reason for the change that you see in 2019 and moving forward in our, in our capital improvement plan on police department.
Well, the, the animal control officer's truck, wasn't that just purchased a couple of years ago?
It's a 2015 Toyota Tacoma. It's got thirty-two thousand miles on it. We've had to do some work to it just to make it road so it can stay on the road. We had to have the rear end rebuilt so it can stay on the road as far as the suspension system goes, because it just was overweighted for the vehicle. So the plan is, as far as that specific example, uh, we anticipate, uh, getting rid of that vehicle, the plan right now, of course, just the plan, is to replace it in 2021 and send that vehicle on down the road to somebody else. So it's not a 2019 issue, but we're projecting out, so by then it will be six years old. Right now it's got thirty-two thousand miles on it. It doesn't get a lot of mileage on it.
Yeah.
Because it's a specific, you know, it's not a patrol car. It's not going, uh, seven days a week. The patrol fleet's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Not every vehicle is going that much, but it's, uh, it's only driven by one person Monday through Friday typically. Now, the officers do use it a lot when the animal control officer's not in.
Yeah, you had that in 2020, the, the one-ton animal control truck?
Uh, actually, that's 2021 is when we have that.
Okay. Yeah, it showed in 2020 on ours.
Okay. Well, that'd be one that, uh, that's one we'd have to modify, but I've got it at 2021 right now.
Okay.
And that's a purpose-built vehicle with a purpose-built backend. It's actually, the vehicle is actually rated to handle that box. I called the manufacturer when we made the plan. I called a box manufacturer and, you know, made sure that, what type of vehicle do we need? And then I called a local dealership and got a quote just for a planning purpose, just kinda got an over-the-phone quote, just to give me an idea about where I need to be with that.
Yeah.
So that'll be a purpose-built vehicle. It won't be something that we just keep going.
Well, that's, you know, disappointing to have a three-year-old vehicle and having to rebuild the rear end.
Uh, we built that in 2016 when I first got here. We had to sink a bunch of money into the, the rear end, so it wasn't even probably a year old when we did that.
Wasn't under warranty?
No. No, because of the box being added in there, I don't believe it was under warranty. I'd have to go back and look.
Okay.
But I believe that it's probably not being used in the scope that it was intended, but it's there, we've got it, we've gotta make it safe for our animal control officer and the creatures that go in the back of it, so that's what we did.
Gotta make them safe to go be euthanized.
Some of them, not all of them.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-one. Uh, I sent you an updated report today of the actual six-year plan.
Okay. So will, with this particular vehicle here, will, um, will any of these vehicles be kept in the city's service as just a spare vehicle for, for personnel to use?
You know, we're, we're doing that right now. We did keep one of the rebuilt chargers in there because it saves us so much money. Because of course, you know, you have to pay employees mileage. If they take their own vehicle, you gotta pay them at the federal mileage rate, I'm, I'm assuming, that's what we use. And, uh, that just ate our lunch and so the first chance that we got, we designated that vehicle as a training car. I had the fleet manager take it and go make sure it was gone through and, so we don't leave somebody stranded somewhere. In the future, the plan is to purchase, uh, a used highway patrol vehicle and its intent will be as a training vehicle. So it will be to alleviate mileage on the city van and also to prevent us from having to pay mileage or as much mileage out to an officer, um, or to officers in training. So right now, uh, we are using, we have one that we need to get rid of, we have one that we're using. And, um, you know, whether another department wants to come along and pick it up, I don't know. By the time that, typically by the time that we push them off to the side, we literally have been pushing them off to the side since I've started here. As a matter of fact, I got a notice from, uh, some outfit from the state Oklahoma because one of our former cars was found on the side of the road down there after it... the road down there after it left our employ. But because the VIN, apparently no one registered it or whatever, whenever they bought it, from whoever they bought it from, or, or did them a favor and hauled it off from them. But anyway, they're, they're pretty well shot when we move them on. Hopefully, that doesn't necessarily continue, but.
Sure. Just as, just as a rule, overall, in fleet management, we don't like to see when, and Jerry kind of mentioned it, doing that process, but when we replace a vehicle, sometimes we'll cascade it down and then one gets kicked out. We don't want to increase the fleet by, well, we'll just keep this one around. You get fleet creep and, and costs are going up, especially on maintenance. But, but sometimes it's a case-by-case basis which vehicle it is, and maybe it can be used in another department and they don't have to replace another one that's there. Anyway, but general policy is one vehicle in, one vehicle out.
We'd probably get about a thousand dollars trade when we, when we move them on. I mean, they're, they're in tough shape whenever we're done with them.
I was just curious about this particular one being, it was a 2015 with thirty-two thousand miles on it and looking at, it's 2018 now.
It'll be, it'll be three years from now before that, if you're talking about the animal control vehicle, that'll be three years from now before we move it along. Or that's the plan.
Right. But the mileage on this would be?
It won't be very high.
Seventy thousand?
Somewhere, somewhere in there. And what, what I've found in my career is, is that once, in particular patrol cars, once a patrol car gets somewhere between seventy and a hundred thousand miles, they, they pretty well are ready for the recycling yard. They really just get to be a lot of trouble and a lot of expense, which is what we found when I started here, was our cars were just killing us on our maintenance budget. That particular vehicle, considering that it's being used in a manner in which it wasn't designed, I, I, I think we'll be doing well to get it to 2021. Because it's just, it's, you, you don't take a quarter-ton truck and, you know, where I came from, we had a one-ton, one-ton purpose-built truck as an animal control vehicle. And it's going strong probably six, eight years later. So, you know, you can't take a quarter-ton truck and ask it to do that job and expect it to do well, particularly on city streets. Patrol vehicles and police vehicles in general, you're stopping and starting constantly. And they just kind of tend to wear a little faster than people realize.
I thought you were dissing our streets there for a moment.
Nope. No, no dissing the streets. I've seen it where I came from as well. They, seventy thousand miles and doors literally start to fall off and wheel, front ends become a real problem, transmissions become a real problem. So, you know, you get about twenty thousand miles past the warranty and things really start to give you hassles.
Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
The figure for condemnations, does that include the contribution from the housing authority, or is that in addition?
We put in fifteen, they put in fifteen.
Okay. So we have a hundred thousand dollar budget?
Yeah.
I guess you're just wanting us to ask questions, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we were proceeding.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I already know what it says in here.
Yeah. Barb, I had a question. You have miniature train repairs and carousel improvements, three thousand each. We just had the train totally rebuilt, didn't we?
Right. It's the track. We need to do improvements and that's to, to replace the ties. You know, the, each year, we're going to have to replace ties. And, and so that's what that is. And then on the carousel, it's on the lighting. We didn't get the lighting done with that money, and so we have lighting yet to do.
Okay. I know we've put a lot of money into, I think, the carousel, then we put about thirty thousand?
We did thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand. We went over that.
And I mean, it went over, but I'm going to pull that from my playground. So, but things came up and, so, but yeah. So we did get the lighting. I've got some parts for lighting, but hopefully next year I can get the lighting done.
That's just lighting on the carousel itself, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay.
Leonard, are you going down in order or are you just kind of bouncing around?
I was kind of going down my list, but I kind of bounced around a little bit, too.
By the way.
Yeah.
Barb, on those guillotine doors, how many replacement doors that, is that gonna, gonna buy you?
Well, we're, we've gotten our budget this year for fifteen and, I didn't bring my paperwork, but it's about, there's like a hundred thousand dollars we can spend for that. So we're just doing fifteen thousand a year. And those are for the Stevens buildings. That's all the mechanical doors. And so we're just doing upgrades as a little at a time each year.
Okay. And the hundred and fifty for Kitty Land?
That, you'll have to talk with David on that.
That's ADA, that's a part of the ADA, ADA plan.
Wow. Boy, I hate to jump around because I thought he was going to go through his list and then we were going to jump in. So I'm going to go back up to the, the very, very first one, in-code upgrade.
Okay.
And what, what upgrade are we talking about?
So that, that is going, in-code upgrade is for accounting system.
Okay.
So I'm really not one that's really likes to do computer upgrades, software upgrades, but this will give us some more flexibility. We're, we're going to get in-code as we got it today to do the things we needed to do. But this, it, it's a more workable platform and it's got some different options, some different management tools. But in 2020, Office, Microsoft Office will not support the version that we have. And so it will become unusable in 2020. So we are left with no option but to do an upgrade.
And you may recall, I've mentioned this before in talking about the financial software, really one of the major reasons to upgrade is cybersecurity. We're daily seeing more and more governments, local governments actually being hacked. There was City of Atlanta, a big city, and they were spending millions to correct it and not to mention lost productivity for days, weeks, didn't have their computer system. They had to hire, they come in and fix that. They were attacked, not to mention if we were just hacked and data stolen. But that's one of the key points that, the key reasons is to upgrade is the cybersecurity. In fact, the league's doing a thing upcoming on cybersecurity for local governments.
So also included in that, is that a sitting up procurement policy or software?
It would, it would be in there. I mean, the procurement policy, that's, that's not really part of in-code. I mean, we, we tell it, okay, certain things have to happen. We can do that now in our system. We're also working on another system with Laserfish to handle some of the purchase orders so they flow through to a central location and get shot out. So we're handling the purchase orders correctly going forward as opposed to how we're doing it now. So that, that'll be another little piece of it. And I'm still waiting on the estimate on that. It's not going to be very expensive, but, but that, it, it has to do with it, but it doesn't have to do with it. We're, we're, our hands are being forced on this one. We've got to do something.
Okay. We talked about the Mercy Reserve. So the two hundred thousand for the replacement of the ambulance, you're using the, let's call it a grant that Mercy Hospital gave the city when we took possession of the building.
Correct.
And will that cover the full cost of the ambulance upgrade?
Yeah.
Good.
And how old is the ambulance we're planning to replace?
David, there's actually two in.
Is this the one? Is this one with two, or is this one new, one new box?
This is the one with.
Two vans or one box?
These are 2012 trucks. We're remounting one truck for ninety-eight thousand dollars, and we're getting an additional, trading one of the 2012s in for additional van. We're currently doing on average right now, forty-six transfers a month. We put over fifty-six thousand miles. We, our blue, everybody likes to call our Mercedes, is right at eighty thousand miles. It had twenty-six thousand July first last year when NDR opened. So now we'll have two of those vans that we can move these patients with and remount one of the trucks. So our plan is we'll have three big trucks to run our primary calls and our two vans to, to move the patients. And ninety-eight thousand for both of those, so just under two hundred thousand.
I'm, I'm a little hazy, but when we didn't have an ER here in town, it seems like we bought an extra ambulance that we'd never had before because we were going to be.
Correct.
Taking everybody out of town, basically.
Correct.
Now that we have an ER, it seems like we have excess capacity.
Excess capacity as far as ambulances?
Yes. If we needed a next one because we had no ER, and now we do have an ER, it seems like we.
Well, you have to remember, we have an ER, but we have an ER that's limited. I cannot take any trauma patients there. I cannot take anybody that's OB or anybody that is currently on dialysis.
But when I see the stats every week that Craig sends out, it looks like almost everybody goes to the local ER, the vast majority.
We do, but you got to remember, they're just ER. We then do forty, between forty and fifty transfers a month from that facility to Kansas City. A majority of them go Freeman, Tulsa, Bartlesville.
Forty or fifty a month is one and a half a day. That doesn't seem like that's that much to me.
Well, you got to remember, we do two hundred and thirty calls a month. So if you listen to much of our traffic, we are busy. Those trucks typically, when we run, there's two or three calls at a time. We are very busy.
So all our vehicles are in constant use?
Pretty much. And we have two primary trucks that run out on primary calls with, have backups because they do break down. And we have two trucks that Sean primarily runs for transfers. So they are constantly being used. Our two oldest are kind of like what Jerry said. An ambulance has a lifespan of about five years in our current cycle. After that, you run into huge maintenance issues. They're just a lot of maintenance issues. They're out of warranty and they cost us a lot of money. And so we just move them on.
So the, the first one you mentioned, we're basically going to pick up our box and put it on a new truck?
Put it on a brand-new chassis. The box is in great condition. You know, if we had to go out and buy a brand-new truck, we'd spend the whole two hundred thousand just on a brand-new truck.
Right.
So we can put a chassis under it, reuse that box, and ninety-eight thousand. Then a van ambulance, ninety-eight thousand. We'll have a brand-new van then that we can run.
All right. Thanks.
You bet. Thank you.
Hey, Dave, I, I've got one, one question. I really don't know very little about this. On an emergency call, you get a call and it's heart attack?
Yes.
Heart problems.
Right.
So you would send out one of the primary trucks, ambulances, one of them?
Yes.
And you'd send out, in addition to that, what would you send out?
It all depends on, our police department is EMD just trained. So as a dispatcher's getting information, if you listen to us, and Leonard probably knows more, he listens, he's heard us before, she's constantly updating us. So depending on where the call's at, you know, we have rural fire coming, us, but, you know, she comes on the radio and says, you know, I have a cardiac unresponsive CPR in process, you're going to get a bigger response versus have a person with chest pain. You're going to get an initial ambulance, but one of the biggest concerns in EMS and even on the fireside is back injuries. So we are constantly mindful of our employees and their backs. All of us, myself included, just a lot of large people we deal with. It's not uncommon for us to have to get somebody off a second floor that's three or four hundred pounds. We've had to cut holes in sides of houses and all sorts of stuff. So you may get additional ambulances just for that support.
Sure.
But we're also mindful always of our fireside. It's a balance, but they do a good job.
Okay.
To answer your question, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
While you're up there, Dave.
Yes, sir.
The, the ADA, the two hundred thousand is just a budget number. You haven't identified projects yet?
Not for, we just kind of, you know, looked at this year, what we're doing later. You've told us that you, and there's projects at City Hall you want to do. We just kind of stuck some numbers there. You know, we, I looked at the park, Kitty Land was about a hundred fifty, so we just kind of stuck that there and a couple others. There's a couple of street projects Mike wants to do, but we have a CDBG that we could go for. I think we'd have to do it, what was it, Craig, by September?
I believe that's September.
Potentially could fund the ADS, ADA aspect of that. So you're correct.
For nineteen.
But we budgeted the dollars it's going to take to do it, but if we get the CDBG.
Yeah.
You know, going for the CDBG, the park or Kitty Land, that would probably have a lot more.
Right.
Draw and use our, our special-use sales tax. Because when I was talking to Vance about some of the ADA issues, even during demolition, ADA money could be.
Right.
Used in there and supplement. So we could cut down any.
Right.
Borrowed money. But, you know, if you've got that CDBG opportunity, the, the park could really be in Kitty Land, two areas that might.
Yeah. You guys can give Craig and direct us, but we do it, I think it has to be, what was it, Craig, September? I think it has to be done by September.
I think we have to get it surveyed, and it, it either has to be in towards the end of September or in October.
It's something we got to get on. So, you know, whether streets or there.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we have not, we just put some numbers at the ADA.
They've, they've been working at the park doing ADA in the playground and.
Right.
The CDBGs were fifty-fifty, weren't they?
I believe so, yes.
So, yeah, that would really.
And she has a big project. We, the ravine is the one I think Barb was wanting to go to, and that's about a four hundred thousand dollar project.
Four hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to get down to that ravine.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then earlier, you mentioned the ladder truck. You put in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It would come out of the, the five mil. And that's just depending on, it, it's not a determined, that it's there to use in search if we could find a used or whatever.
Whatever our directive, whatever we find, if, if, if the decision's made that, hey, we, we've got an opportunity to go get a brand-new one, well, that, that's a year's lease payment.
And if we came in with a grant ahead of time, that, that money could be used to complete the pumper if needed to be.
Now, this is for the ladder truck.
Right, okay.
This, this is the ladder truck. So there's two separate requests in there. Grants for the pumper, this is for the ladder.
Will, will the grant for the pumper be a hundred percent grant or how much?
The grant would be, the truck would be like four hundred thousand dollars. So what he's putting, proposed is a twenty thousand to cover what the grant does.
It's five percent match.
So we would just have to provide five percent. Okay, good.
Yeah, that's what the twenty thousand is.
Yeah. Yeah. Need to get a grant on that ladder truck, too. Those are hard. Okay. Okay.
Fifty thousand in here for residential sidewalk. Is that?
Just sidewalk repairs?
Just a number again, we just put a number in there.
Yeah.
Not necessarily ADA, but
No, not ADA, yes. Sidewalk projects.
We don't have anything identified?
No.
It's kind of a place where we put that amount in every year.
Now, this is, this is part of the ADA.
I know, there's
Okay. Oh, okay. I take that matter.
Kelly has always kept a complaint list, but it's just, as you know with ADA, Leonard, it's hard to deal with. When you go onto a sidewalk and somebody has a sidewalk, we don't have all the ramps in town. So you potentially go to an area to fix a sidewalk and we got ramps at the corners and we, but we, we do have a list of people wanting sidewalks repaired.
The, the consent agreement with the Department of Justice just identified that wherever we had milled or overlaid
Right.
a street had to be provided with ramps. There's no dictation
Right.
of connecting the two, but there's some where tree roots or just age has severely deteriorated some of the sidewalks.
Yeah. And there's confusion out there because people think the sidewalks are our responsibility, but they're actually the property owner's responsibility. So, I mean, it's kind of a policy decision on your guys' s. You know, we're going to get into that a little bit with the twenty eighteen project and, you know, the Annie Mae sidewalk. You know, there's, they consider that city, you know, in the past, we've always shared on the downtown sidewalk projects. So we deal with that quite a bit. Kelly can tell you, we get quite a few phone calls, come fix your sidewalk.
Yeah. I remember with the ADA or the streetscape, the professional building at a corner, it was a sizable amount.
Yes, it's varied. And it, it's, sidewalks are not cheap.
No.
But like the country club area, there are no sidewalks.
Correct.
So how did we make that decision?
I think that was all part of when they put that together, right?
The development.
Subdivision development that the city just took in.
That was prior then to the subdevelopment regulations.
So if somebody called from that area and said, I want a sidewalk?
You'd have to do it by a benefit district or something like that.
So we don't have to have sidewalks. We could remove some sidewalks if we wanted to.
Well, those were annexed in, some of that area was annexed in after it was already developed.
I understood that part, but we don't have an ordinance that says everybody has to have a sidewalk, so we could actually remove some.
Regulations, when you do a new subdivision, have some of those requirements in there.
Okay.
The, the policy about the sidewalks being the
Property owners?
Property owners. That's not changed. That, that policy has always been
Yeah, that is in the city code.
Deviation, okay.
Yes, yeah. It's always been. It just, they used to have, Mike Conway used to do a sidewalk project every year. And they do twenty, twenty-five thousand every year and fix pieces of sidewalk. Fifty thousand is not going to fix very much sidewalk at all.
On water production, we've got to replace a mower, the twelve thousand dollars. And just a question, you know, we end up with, water production needs a mower, sanitation needs a mower, City Hall needs mowed, Memorial Hall needs mowed. Is there a thought about maybe contracting to have some of the lawns mowed? So, you know, every place doesn't have to have their own mower and the staff then can devote time to doing? Have we ever looked at that?
I think we've contracted some mower in the past.
The floodlots were contracted out at one time.
You know, to, we look at, and, and sanitation, you have to mow out there too. That, you know, each place has their mower and by the time we maintain, purchase, and then, well, you explained what happens when you go under trees with dark safety glasses on and you take them off? And, and the liability that we have, would it be something to work at?
We won't let Craig drive it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is it something maybe we could save money and, and, and go to a bid service for, for those areas?
It's certainly worth, worth looking at. I mean, cities do it different way and depending on your need and your, and size, oftentimes you'll have in-house a grounds crew. They, so each building won't have their own mower, but there'll be a grounds crew that does it all for the city. If you get to outside of the city or just contracting each facility out for the routine, you know, you can do it either way. It would just take some analysis and see what we're, I mean, I don't know how much time the water treatment plant people spend mowing or the, around each facility.
Quite a bit if you, if you look at what they do.
Yeah. That's what, that
It's not just the plant. I mean, there's all their pump stations
Right.
and stuff all straight out all over the place. I mean, we do, and not just water production, also
So instead of having your staff who, they're not there to do grounds maintenance, they're due to water production or water, you have a contractor to come in and, you know, and zip it out and
I'm sure they would be happy to do that.
The alternative, I like to mow the lawn.
You know, I think, I don't know, I was just thinking with
Probably good business when I retire too.
Yeah. Either look at a, like you say, a grounds crew that would be responsible for the city lots and maybe they could supplement some of the
It's definitely something to look at.
Bacon lots or whatever.
Floodlots?
Yeah.
Definitely something to look at, but
Nuisance lots?
Five.
Nuisance lots.
Yeah. There's, you know, I know what the, the park and the cemetery, they, they're just constantly and
I was gonna say you can contract it out.
But looking at all these odd spots that we've got and, and to have one of your workers that either plant and now you're, you're saying they've got to travel, that even makes it more difficult for them to to do their job at the plant and, and mow. So that would be, I'd like to see, you know, what some options would be instead of purchasing and keep preparing if, if we can come up either with a grounds crew proposal or, or contract.
At last count, I think, Craig, the information you sent me, there were over, over two hundred nuisance lots in addition to flood property, in addition to city property that needs to be mowed and trimmed and
Our grounds crew, which is my staff, when they can get to it.
Yeah, yeah. So you have limited staff. You have more lots that you could handle and, and that's, you know, that's another major complaint that, that people have that live in these areas. I know Wester years ago put out for bid all their substation property and wherever they had offices at. They just put it out for bid and, and they got out of the, of having their employees go out and take care of substation. They got rid of that many, many years ago. And sold the mower or two that they had and just got out.
Right.
And they ended up with the less personnel. They didn't have the personnel to, to do it anyway, end result, so.
Water distribution?
Yes.
I've, I've worked and sat down for a while.
Yeah.
Still working.
Waterline projects, automated meter, one hundred thousand dollars. Waterline project, five hundred thousand dollar automated meter readers. After looking at what you went through in the winter, I wondered if maybe shift some money to get more water line replacement and, you know, because your initial cost is going to be setting up and, you know, address the commercial meters that have caused you a lot of problems of going into the buildings and, and that. But increase the water distribution line replacement to, you know, maybe two hundred thousand or two fifty, three hundred.
What's funny, you say that.
No one's laughing though.
So actually, remember when he got one of the trucks here a month or so ago? And you're like, well, I don't see it in the budget. But it was from twenty seventeen and I encumbered it. I also encumbered seventy-five thousand dollars for waterline projects. So he's got an extra seventy-five thousand dollars sitting there, plus this. Plus, he's got a capital reserve that we built into this budget that he could pull some of that money from too, if he needed access to some more, some more capital room there to do this.
Yeah. I was just, I was thinking to do a bigger impact in your waterline replacement and just then the next year where, you know, because the money we save by not leaking and breaking is going to come back into reserves too. And you've got a lot of buildings downtown that the meters are inside or different situations. And look at
Yes.
at addressing the startup and, and getting that kind of bug worked out a little bit. But, you know, looking more aggressive at some waterline replacements that have been causing us problems.
That was our correction on the automated reading was to addressing anything that's inside of a building and those, those situations. But yes, waterline, Mike and I have been working on getting some extra money in there. I've got a list of projects that we're looking at getting going and getting bid out to do some, quite a bit of waterline work.
Yeah. Well, that's what I was looking at, you know, initially do a little bit of the meter to get it going and then even increase later on instead of towards the end, you know, six hundred or seven hundred thousand to get the meters, but go heavy on waterline replacement. Again, when you're, you're looking at freezing conditions and you've got crews working long hours, fatigue, injury starts coming into play and
I do have to say, we, water distribution has one of the best safety records in the city, so I have to give them that.
They're diligent. I've seen them working on some situations and they're, are efficient. Yeah.
Instead of one hundred, five hundred, maybe three hundred, three hundred?
Yeah.
You're proposing?
I mean, we can pull from that five hundred. If you look down on further to his oh, maybe I took, oh, I took it out for this year. It's an eighteen. So an eighteen, there's a five hundred thousand dollar reserve in there. We could pull from that reserve and pull what we needed up to into the water lines. So you already got a hundred and seventy-five for, for seven, for nineteen that can be used. Well, eighteen actually, but nineteen, then we can pull from that capital reserve.
Is it possible to, like Gary said, go three hundred, three hundred and leave the reserve where it is? So that if we
Most definitely.
Yeah. Because that reserve, the more we can build, the more cushion
Sure.
for a major issue or
And I'll know more on the automated reading once we have a, a study done, which doesn't cost anything. As to actually how we can section it off and start breaking it up and, and we can do it.
Terry, just a question on, you may have said this before, but the, the hundred thousand, the waterline project, that's all in-house, right? Or do we contract any of that out?
We have tried to do a lot of it in-house. It's getting more and more difficult to
Well, that's my question. If you went to three hundred thousand, we couldn't all do that.
No, we couldn't.
We'd have to contract out.
Three hundred thousand dollars would work in-house.
Yeah, well, we talked about it, about seventy-five, a hundred thousand is about all you could do anyway, in-house.
Yes, and we're not, we're really not even going to get to that this year. It, it's a lot like Leonard's saying, we're spending so much time fixing leaks that we're not getting line laid. And we're, we're just really going to have to look at contracting most of the line work out.
Well, and, and I've noticed that there's, well, when the water tower came on, the new tower, there were seven leaks in one intersection. Then on South Park in a block, within two months, you've repaired two leaks there within fifty feet of each other. So, you know, to expect your crew to do three hundred thousand dollars worth of waterline replacement, that's
That's my point.
Yeah, no.
Didn't want anybody thinking that it was all going to be done by Terry's
No.
No, it, it'll have to be contracted. And, and most of the work we're looking at right now, I'm looking at contracting out.
Yeah.
Mostly for the difficulty of the, we don't have directional boring equipment, so to bore highways.
Right.
When I was appointed to city commission and you were giving me a tour and I asked you about the condition of the water lines, you said, God only knows. We don't even know what some of them are or when they were installed as. Is that accurate or were you yanking my chain?
Oh, I mean, we know, we know when most of them were installed and I have a pretty good idea where most everything is. Conditions of the line, you, you never know.
Yeah.
I mean, I
When you told me they were carved from wood, you were probably joking or whatever.
Oh, we haven't found any wooden water lines in town. I will tell you, one of the, the oldest line in town I've dug up and surprisingly has one, very, very few leaks on it. It's casting date of eighteen ninety-two.
Wow.
On the cast iron. It's still in service. Matter of fact, we just tapped it the other day on Laurel Street to put a six-inch fire line into the to do senior housing, Washington School. And the pipe is amazingly, it's just really good shape.
Well, it depends on soil conditions and of course
Exactly. And that, that was what I was coming to. What, there's also pipe that's been in the ground for ten, twelve years that we have leaks all over and it, it's just soil conditions and then, yeah.
We haven't spent a lot of money for waterline replacement over, over the years. Is that correct?
Oh, wait, no, actually, we have spent, if you go back and look over the last thirty years, I'm, a lot of money. But it's just hasn't been enough to keep up.
So the, over, over a time period, from going from point A to B, what time period are we looking at to where we've not only we've caught up, but we've, we've started completing certain, are we looking at completing certain areas of town in particular or just the oldest? How, how are you identifying where you're going to go put your resources at?
Number of leaks and condition of pipe when we dig it up.
And, and they're, they're already identified?
We, we track every leak we have, the condition of the pipe and what we found when we excavated. It's all tracked and we, and then I'll look at what we need to do based on those conditions. Also, there's, you know, there's, goes into that also increasing capacity, the fire flows going there and several different things will go into that.
Now, your skid steer landscape rake, your skid steer jackhammer, your skid steer snowplow?
Yeah.
What is the landscape rake?
That's a rake. It's supposed to be a landscape rake.
Oh, okay.
To, for doing dirt work when we tear yards up.
Yards up.
Yeah.
And the, the jackhammer would just be to break up the street and pavement?
That, that's a dual purpose That, that's a dual-purpose hammer. It can be mounted on the skid steer to do flat work or it has an attachment where it can go on the mini excavator. You can also do ditch work with it. So it serves two purposes.
Okay. And the cemetery could borrow it on the-
Sure could. The, the snowplow, if, if you don't know, is we are generally tasked with cleaning up downtown when it snows, clearing the streets in the downtown district and the city parking lots. And it also has a backhoe to use and it, it's, it'd be nice to have something to move that. If I have an articulating snowplow on, I could pull that stuff out from the curb and do it a lot easier than-
Okay, so you work with the street department on it? While they're busy, all the others are?
Yeah.
Okay.
We generally clean up the downtown. Been trying to get one for years.
Okay. That was all I had.
Okay.
For you, I think I understood the other, the channel monster. Anything working in that place has got to be a monster. Two balers. Is that cardboard balers?
Cardboard baler and a plastic baler.
Two separate ones for car-
Two separate ones.
Okay.
So you did cardboard and this one with plastic and the other one.
Looked like a little bit of a light crowd over there today when I went-
Was it?
Took my recycling.
Yeah.
I was the only one there.
Must have been the weather.
Yeah, I guess the weather.
And then you don't have a forklift out there, so that would be to move your bales and-
Move the bales, stack them until we get a company to come get them.
Does that, I guess you set your dumpsters with the truck, don't you?
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Someplace I noticed, I don't remember, it was dealing with the airport, some repairs or some projects. Maybe it was over here. Did, did we ever get a fueling ladder?
Not yet.
Okay. I didn't notice that in the, in the budget. I knew that when we were out there on the tour, looking with the meter or the credit card fueling system. Okay.
I think Cody's, Cody's looking at some ladders that'll work and getting me prices, so.
Okay.
You can probably just, you know, take it out of the budget somewhere.
Yeah.
A line item, equipment line item.
Are you going to be able to do that in two thousand eighteen or we're doing it added in the nineteen budget?
I probably need to get a price first, a firm price. I can go with Cody and then find out.
Yeah. Yeah, you can let us know when we have our next budget.
Yep.
Meeting.
Sure.
And the magnet, did it get repaired?
Uh, should have. I'll check with Cody. Should be back on the, the truck.
Yeah, okay. I thought those were a couple airport budget items that I didn't notice on the plan and since we had talked about them out there.
Yeah. Yeah, the magnet goes on, magnet goes on the sweeper, front of the sweeper.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Before you get away, I-
What?
Before you get away, the, the first several years I went through this, we were always talking about Polycarts. We had to get, switch over to Polycarts. Now we're not talking about it.
I think we're talking in twenty twenty.
We are talking about it.
We're talking again about it.
We are going to do, Mike and I are going to sit down and kind of break everything down so we get a true understanding of exactly what it's going to take to do it and do it right.
Okay.
But yeah, I mean, on, once we get to that point, we'll be, we'll definitely be looking at once a week.
Are you going to contact other providers to give proposals to compare our costs to an outside?
We're gonna, we're gonna check around everywhere. We're going, and then, then that's another thing Craig wants to also check out. What's the cost for someone else just to come in and do it for us? So there's, there's a variety of different things with, with the sanitation and the service that we have that, that we're looking at. Days of service, Polycarts, outside contractors, hole works.
Okay. So-
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
If we're, do we have a, a new sanitation truck in the budget this year for two thousand nineteen?
Yes.
Two thousand nineteen, yeah. And that forty thousand, that's the lease payment.
Well, if we're going to look at two thousand twenty of Polycarts and proposals, shouldn't we put off purchasing a new truck until that decision's made?
Well, the truck will be equipped with two Polycart chippers anyway.
Well-
That's the way I would come up with one.
And that was the way it was initially envisioned when they were going to buy the Polycarts. It was before I came here, was to use with the trucks that, and that would, would dump the Polycarts. So this truck here would do the same, would be able to dump those Polycarts.
Yeah, but if you get an outside company to take trash service-
That's a whole different ballgame.
Now, why have a new truck? Why not wait a year?
Well, it depends on, it depends on how you get into contracting out. If you're, if you're currently running a service and you want to contract it out, you can do it various ways. You can say, all right, contract, put it out, contractor will come in and operate our equipment. Or you can just say contractor, you, you'll come in and get the contract, you'll take over all our equipment. We'll basically sell it to you or part of the deal and then they use their equipment that they use typically more, much more efficiently than the, the trucks that they, that they get. But often I've seen when they, when they've been on a city like that, they'll take, they'll, they'll take the old equipment, the trucks and resell them, whatever they'll do with them, but then they'll use their own, much more efficient, one person, one truck operation.
Yeah.
So it, it depends on how you-
Yeah. It just seems like to get a new truck for a year and then get the hit on new price drop when you drive it off the car lot and then in a year, deal with somebody else buying it. Get hit twice. We still have to make the difference of, that if we're considering it, wouldn't you want to wait a year? If we don't need the new truck right now, just save, what do you think?
Yeah, or do the analysis much sooner.
Right.
All right, and that's, that's the next step is to really look at putting the numbers to it.
Complete the analysis before we purchase a truck.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's kind of, I guess we would call it a placeholder for-
It's coming. The, the analysis is coming sooner rather than later. We just got a few things we, we've got to get handled first, under control, resituated. And then Mike and I are, it's going to be the top priority, priority list when I get these other things taken care of.
Who else uses Polycarts around here? I know Pittsburgh contracts their service out.
Bartlesville does.
Bartlesville does.
And they operate it within the city. I, I remember when I moved down there, they operated very much like we do today. Throw whatever you want out there. You can have two, three cans. We're going to come twice a week. And then all of a sudden, boy, here comes these Polycarts and I was mad. But then I found out now it's just fine.
In, in some of the larger cities, they have the, they've gotten away from providing the sanitation service, but they've had bid out and a company come in and they've, they provided the Polycart for, for-
Yes.
Regular trash. And then they've also provided one for recycling items.
Right. And Coffeyville does that. Now, not on the recycling piece of it, but they contractors out down there. So we'll, we'll certainly be looking around at, at all the different ideas to find the best solution for us.
Any questions?
I'm so burned out.
Yeah. Well, I wonder is we take our notes, get the other handout that we went through. If you can print that out, get it in our mailboxes, then we can-
Sure.
Sit down, each of us go through it and then schedule another work session.
The PowerPoint, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, the PowerPoint we have.
I don't want to print it out, just email it.
I need paper.
Yeah, I'd like paper too.
No problem.
Okay.
My eyes don't focus after I look at the computer for so many hours.
I found out when I mark on the screen a note that when I change a slide, my screen gets full.
That's, you're, you're using your Edge of Sketch.
Yeah. So, okay. But thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
And staff, Dave, Sean, Mike. Terry. We'll move on. We've got executive session. Did, did you type up?
We got a break.
Mike.
Well, I came prepared. A motion for executive session. I move that we recess for an executive session for discussion of employee performance pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception, KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B one. How many minutes?
Ten. It's at eight-thirty maybe?
Yeah. We'll resume session at, at eight-thirty.
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay.
Is it time?
Uh, we're back in session. No action taken from executive session. With that, we're at adjournment and we were, the information we got on adjourning without an adjournment motion and all was taken from a presentation at the league that they showed us what not to do. And this was at the end and they showed us what not to do, but then they ended before they told us we have to have a motion, a second and a vote. So we're correcting our errors from the past. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
We think we've just been in one long meeting.
Thank you for hanging in here.